When you are good evening, everyone we will start tonight's regular session meeting October fourteenth twenty twenty five at six P M. First up, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance Councilmember Hanson, will you please lead us?
I'd be honored to Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And next we will have a roll call.
Councilmember Busby.
Here.
Councilmember Pride.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Hudson.
Here. City manager, any changes to the agenda?
There is one change, we will not be having the closed session, so that item should just be pulled completely.
Okay. Hey, next up is ceremonial matters proclamation National Wildlife Refuge Week. National Wildlife Refuge Week, whereas the National Wildlife Refuge System managed by the U S Fish and Wildlife Services is the world's premier network of public lands dedicated to the conservation of fish, wildlife, plants, and their habitats for the benefit of present and future generations. And whereas Sacramento National Wildlife Refuge Complex headquartered in Willows, California, manages thousands of acres of vital wetland and upland habitat across the Sacramento Valley, including the Sacramento, Delvin, Colusa, and Southern National Wildlife Refuges. And whereas the Refuge Complex provides sanctuary for millions of migratory birds along the Pacific Flyway and plays a critical role in protecting endangered species and maintaining the ecological health of North Northern California's natural landscape. And whereas the dedicated staff and volunteers at the Sacramento National Wildlife Refuge Complex demonstrate exemplary stewardship, environmental leadership, and community engagement from their visitor center and headquarters in the city of Willows. And whereas the second full week of October is designated as National Wildlife Refuge Week, celebrating the important role these refuges play in conserving our nation's natural heritage and supporting our local communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I Evan Hudson, Mayor of the City of Willows, and on behalf of the Willis City Council on the citizens of Willows, do hereby proclaim October twelfth through eighteenth twenty twenty five as National Wildlife Refuge Week in the city of Willows, and recognize with pride the Sacramento National Wildlife Refuge Complex for its outstanding contributions to wildlife conservation, environmental education, and the vitality of our local community. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand an official seal this fourteenth day of October twenty twenty five. And I will be presenting this to Kelly Molden and Bobby the Bird.
We're just pulling up the proper term.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, it was it was a really good show, thank you very much.
Enjoyed that very much, thank you.
Very safe. Go Lucy, hi.
And Ricky.
No, thank you guys so much.
I've saved.
Nope, we leave it open, we're all good, thank you so much. All right, with that, we will go into item six, Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved with a single vote unless removed for separate discussion by the council or city manager. Individuals wishing to speak on consent items or matters not on the agenda are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor and council members and are limited to three minutes. By law, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. We have item six A register approval, item six B minutes approval, six C administrative analyst job classification, fire and community development and services departments. Item six D amended conditions of approval for Cali Love LLC CUP two five dash zero one and six E planning commission appointment. With that, I will open it up to public comment. And seeing none, give to the discretion of the council.
I'd like to pull six C and six D from the consent, please.
Six C and six D?
Yes.
Okay, pleasure the council, everyone go with Paul and those.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve item six A, six B, and six E Edward as presented.
Okay, I have a first, any further discussion or sorry, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass for item six A, six B as in boy and six E as in Edward. So next up for further discussion is item six C administrative analyst job classification, fire and community development and services department. I recommend action approve the attached job classification and salary schedule based on the approved twenty twenty five twenty six budget authorizing the creation and addition of one full time administrative analyst for fire and community development and services departments. Councilmember Pride, I'll give it to you since you're the one that has to pull it.
I just literally had a couple of questions, you know, when you read the job description, because it's two departments, but both have a ton of work that we all know needs to be done. I was just curious at the beginning, well, two questions. One, there's two supervisors, two different department heads was curious if they're anticipating that there is there going to be one supervisor of record that does evaluations or they're going to actually be getting an evaluation for each part of the job? And these are questions we may not have answers for tonight. And secondly, I just thought, especially as we transition into this position, which I'm fully supportive of, there's so much work here that I'm just wondering if staffs prioritized, you know, it's going to be halftime for each department head at the beginning and just, you know, do we have a sense of where we're going to start? So we're not totally overwhelming this new person with so much work that how do we be successful doing two full time jobs essentially?
Um, so I would envision that the two supervisors would collaborate on a single performance evaluation together and come to an agreement on what that would be, and there would just only be one for that particular position. And then with the job classification, the description, I mean, I think generally we try to kind of throw in everything. So it's not just like and others duties is assigned. So I, I, you know, both, you know, the fire chief and the community development director can tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm imagining that they already have projects that have our priorities right up front and that the other ones that are listed there might be something later on.
Right, I'm just thinking of employee success, you know, you come into a new job and there's so much work to be done and you know, it's a new position for us and just being mindful that you know, that we're thinking about how that plays out when the, when the person comes on board, you know, four hours are over at the fire department, I didn't get everything done. Now I'm going to go over to CDS and try to get everything done and you know that we're just mindful of that. Like I said, it was a a great job description, but as I read it, I thought, man, there's a whole lot of work here and it could be a little overwhelming for someone. So just the reality of that. I think I just had wanted to ask those questions rather than just approve it and wonder about it later.
Mr. Mayor, where we're on item six C.
Correct, yes.
Laura, you finished with six C, I just had to come, yeah. No, I thank you for pulling that council member pride. I was just going to to thank Community Development Services Director Joe Benton Court and Fire Chief Nate Monk and as well as city manager Marty Brown for doing excellent job and that duty statement. I've written a lot of duty statements that was all encompassing, very good work. So thank you. And you're right, there's a lot of responsibility there. So anyway, but long overdue and finally going to have some help pretty soon. So good job. Thank you. That's all I get. Thank you.
With that, if there's no other discussion, I would move.
Is there any public, I need to ask for public comment again, considering it's part of the initial, okay. Yeah, pleasure the council.
So I would move that we approve the administrative analyst job classification as presented and salary schedule as presented.
Second motion.
First and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion pass five to zero. Next item six D amended conditions of approval for Cali Love LLC CUP twenty five dash zero one. Recommendation approve the amended conditions of approval for the conditional use permit CUP two five dash zero one for Cali Love LLC.
I requested that action be pulled simply because I noted, since I had made a motion or amended Vice Mayor Thomas's motion on the conditions of approval, that condition sixteen had just not been captured the way that I had made the motion. And it turns out, I didn't realize the word change was in item sixteen in more than one place. So I wanted to bring that forward because it is amended, we have a copy of that at the dais. So condition sixteen changed from what was in the original packet.
Pleasure the council, any further questions?
Uh, motion to approve six D.
I have a first, is there a second?
Can I just clarify that's as amended, right?
As amended.
Not at the end.
Is there a second to approve the motion?
Oh, go ahead and second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion pass five to zero. Next item, item seven A, public hearing. Rezone file number R Z dash two five dash zero one and general plan amendment file number GPA dash two five dash zero one. One oh three South Pluma Street recommended action adopt ordinance XX dash two zero two five entitled an ordinance of the city of Willows City Council granting the rezone to amend the zoning from central commercial to multiple residence professional office and a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation from general commercial to office of professional for the property located at one oh three South Pluma Street assessors parcel number zero zero two dash one one three dash zero zero one by title only and waive the full reading of the ordinance. Well, that's at the end. Mr. Benton Court, I'll pass this over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, Joe Benton Court, Community Development Services Director. So yep, as explained, adopting this ordinance will modify the zoning from central commercial to multiple residence professional office and modify the land use in the general plan. This will allow the property owner to both reside on the property and continue operating a professional law office consistent with the intent of the resident professional zoning district. The the main reason for this general commercial or central commercial does allow for a person to occupy the building that they work at, but they have to live on the second story of the building, which was majorly cost prohibitive in the billing of her size. And this has been her law office for a long while. It's got the characteristics of a residence. And so kinds of fits the build for a residential professional zoning and general land use. The city council introduced this ordinance at its September twenty third twenty twenty five meeting, and this was following the September second twenty five planning commission public hearing where the commission voted three to zero to recommend approval. Project involves no new construction or our interior exterior renovations at this point and is categorically exempt from CEQA. This action will bring the property into conformance with surrounding land uses, several of which are already zoned to RP and will maintain the residential character of the neighborhood while some more while supporting small professional business activity within the city. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmember Thomas, any questions?
No, other than it seems like the highest and best use for this property.
Okay, Councilmember Pride?
No questions, I agree.
Councilmember Busby?
Pretty straightforward.
Councilmember Hanson?
Absolutely not, we need to approve this.
With that, I will sorry, you're forgetting how to do these. At this point, I will open this up to public hearing at six fifteen. How long is adequate time? Is there like a three minute time string or a lack of people?
Invite any members of the public in the chambers to come up, and if none do, then you can close the air.
Yeah. Give me adequate time for public comment, I will close public comment at six sixteen. Okay. Does the council have any further questions?
Sure.
Okay, seeing none, I will leave this up to the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the move to adopt the ordinance entitled an ordinance to the Willis City Council granting the rezone to mend the zoning from central commercial CC to multiple residence professional office RP and a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation from general commercial GC to office of professional OP for the property located at one oh three South Pluma Street assessors parcel number zero zero two dash one one three dash zero zero one by title only and waive the full reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Have a first and a second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Busby?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
Mayor Hudson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item seven B sale of exempt surplus land public hearing for protest. Marty, is there?
Yes.
Action had me confused.
Good evening, it's just to to open the public hearing and continue it, we have not completed the public noticing both in the paper and on the properties, and we need to do that before you hold the public hearing to protest and we're not quite done, but we will be done by October twenty eighth. But the resolution said we were going to hold it tonight. That's why we're it's on the agenda. So we're recommending you open the public hearing and continue it October twenty eighth.
Okay, with that, any questions from the council?
Yes, sir.
No.
Seeing that, we will open up the public hearing for item seven B, no, sorry. Yes, seven B sale of exempt surplus land public hearing for protest at six seventeen.
Then continue it. Continue it for till the next.
Oh, I don't have to open it, close it, then continue it?
You can continue.
Opening.
Okay, so we're opening it and we're going to continue it to, or sorry, our October twenty eighth twenty twenty five city council meeting.
Correct.
Okay. And then we're on to the next item, we're done with that, or is there something else I have to do?
Close public hearing.
No, you leave it open.
The public hearing open, but you're continuing, I'd suggest a motion of.
Okay. With continuing the public hearing that has been opened, I'll leave it to the pleasure of the council. He's really like still throwing me a curve ball, I've been doing this for almost a year now.
So you're looking for a motion to continue to continue to move to continue this item to October twenty.
Have a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be another roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Busby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
And Mayor Hudson?
Aye.
Okay, now we are moving on to your discussion item and action calendar, discussion and action calendar items. All item, all matters on the discussion and action calendar will be discussed and acted on individually. Individuals wishing to speak on these items are asked to complete a speaker card and submit to the city clerk. Comments should be directed to the mayor and council members and are limited to three minutes by law, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Okay, item eight A, Community Development Block Grant Application Project Consideration Recommended Action Review and Consider Project Operate Options for a twenty twenty five Community Development Block Grant CD BG application and provide direction to staff. Mr. Benton Court, I will give this over to you.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. So the item before you again is the Community Development Block Grant from Housing and Community Development of California. They released their twenty twenty five NOFA, which is Notice of Funding Availability. And this offers up about twenty seven million in available statewide funds for eligible applicants, which would be us. Under this NOFA jurisdictions may submit for only one capital improvement project application. And the maximum request per jurisdiction for infrastructure is capped at three point three million dollars. Application period opens up at the beginning of December with a due date of January thirtieth twenty twenty six. So this meeting, just a little overview, we've it's before the NOFA came out, we're kind of looked at projects, see what was available as it changes year to year, the amount of funding changes year to year. And honestly, this one's pretty pretty in line with what they opened up last year. With that being said, during last year's cycle, we applied for a Community Development Block Grant for sidewalk improvements, basically replacing sidewalks throughout the city. And that was in the tune of around three point three million dollars. In order to do that, we invested approximately eight thousand dollars out of our general fund in order to produce shovel ready documents from our engineering company. Those documents included the development of a cost estimate, technical specification, engineers estimate, an invitation for bid package, project timeline, and then just general assistance with the application and helping us build it. That application ended up not being awarded. But the the work that was used to prepare that application still remains mostly valid, obviously estimates need to be updated slightly, but the location maps and those kinds of things are still able to be used at this point. And given the history of sidewalks, being a much concern of the citizens and the council. We feel like this is a good project and we already have money invested in it. At the previous application period, we were looking at I believe it's engine two.
Engine two.
Versus a sidewalk. The previous council chose to go with the sidewalk rehabilitation. So with the money invested in it and just the amount of effort it takes to go into another infrastructure project, we feel that going after the sidewalks again this year would be another worthwhile investment. And in order to maximize competitiveness of this, it's also one big difference is the the application is a competitive one in nature. Last year's application was an over the counter process, which means whoever clicks the finish button first gets the money. That doesn't bode well for small communities like us with limited resources going against grant writers and major, major other cities. This round of funding will be competitive, so it'll be a score based criteria. So the work put into the application is what is scored against other jurisdictions versus timing of submittal. So yeah, with that, we'd like to continue on with going forward with the sidewalk rehabilitation process. This is just an informal meeting at this point, we would need to come back right at the end of November and pass a resolution with everything kind of worked out and the numbers. We anticipate the project being around the cap of three point three million dollars if you chose to move forward with that sidewalk rehabilitation project. So with that, I can take any questions.
There's a council, Vice Mayor Thomas?
I'm all for it.
I am too. I was gonna ask a question why we didn't get it last year, but we just weren't timely here, other people beat us to the punch.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So these the over the counter first come, first served, you've got groups like Adams Ashby and some other Community Development Services, Javen Concepts, Three Corps, all kind of going. And they've got, they've got them pretty dialed in. I think we'll bet do better off on our next round of it, knowing all the little things that may have cost us time in the beginning, but yeah, talking to some of them, you know, they had seven applications submitted within forty five minutes. So it's, I, that was my first experience with it, and I definitely prefer the competitive where you're kind of, you know, making your selling points.
Well, I'm definitely all for it. I know when it came up last time, I referred it over the fire truck. The only other question, I know that last year sometime we looked at some options for the sidewalk program for Willows and it was just postponed. I'm assuming we're keeping anything along those lines postponed until we hopefully get some funding for sidewalks.
At our, at our agenda meetings that we do bi weekly, it is on the on hold list and the futures list, so it is always fresh on our minds.
Yes, no, I think it's a fabulous idea.
Councilmember Busby?
All in.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to surprise you all. And I agree with moving forward with the sidewalk rehabilitation project as there is at least one funding source and possibly more for the replacement of engine two, although I tried to persuade my my colleagues to pursue the replacement of engine two and potentially truck four last time and I I lost, right? But you know, we've already got the engineering completed for this project, have eight thousand dollars in it, so why waste eight thousand dollars? So and the sidewalks are in terrible shape. I am comforted of the fact that there is, that there is a significant hope for a purchase of engine two of a new engine two. So yeah, I'm in agreement with the matter as presented, as recommended by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I got two quick questions for you. Okay, one, would public letters of support be helpful? And since this is application based and not time based?
Absolutely, all this, all the letters of support we can get, Chamber of Commerce, residential, we, we were able to get some last year. We usually send out generic templates or we invite people to write their own letters, but a good way to do it is just send out templates to people that they can sign off on in agreement with it or seek that. We're also planning on holding some town hall meetings in between this period and when the application opens, that that gives us some additional points on our public input. So public input is a big part of CG. Not a, it's a, it's a major part, you got to gain a lot of points out of that process. So the more support we show for it, the better. The better it is, for sure.
Okay. And then Chief, you're still behind sidewalks and not engine two, correct?
Don't think he ever was.
I understand the thought process and the methodology. And we do have some other pretty sound funding sources identified that I think we can make work. I think it's a good opportunity the city to do something that could potentially prevent an emergency from happening and show the community that we're.
If I could.
Very political answer, I like that.
He's good at that. Just as a reminder, you know, Rumiano Cheese did pay off their Community Development Block Program Income Funding earlier this year, just before they sold to Masters Gallery. And so there's about one point seven million dollars in program income funding, which is CDBG funds, which is basically the city's money to, we have to submit an application for something, but I mean, it's there and available to us and you know, staff is planning to come back to the council with some ideas about how to go about expending those funds. And one of the ideas is possibly the other half of that fire truck. If you recall, Congressman Lamalfa did commit a little over six hundred thousand, we'll see how the budget goes with the federal shutdown, but hopefully that will continue. And then maybe we could use, you know, go after the other half of that money with the program income CDBG funds from Rumiano Cheese paying off their loan. So we are going to be coming back to you with some thoughts and ideas about what makes sense and what's practical and have engaged the council in a discussion. We're just racing to the finish line on a few other projects right now, but hope to do that right after the first of the year.
Now with the possibility that, you know, there is a government shutdown and we don't know what the Senate is actually going to do. Could we use that amount to pay for the engine two and if we end up getting the said six hundred thousand, we could push that towards paying that amount back because we do have to pay the one point seven back, am I correct in that?
No.
Oh, we don't, it's ours.
No, it's ours. All we have to do is call, have, you know, we have to apply and submit an application and qualify under their criteria and guidelines. The HCD guidelines and criteria. So there is a lot of opportunity here for the city. We wanted to sit down staff internally and kind of look at what makes sense with what's, you know, shovel ready, like, you know, what's shovel ready, what's not, and just kind of the different options for the city and what would maybe make the most sense for an expenditure. And one of the ideas, of course, is the the fire truck and then bring it back for discussion with the council with, you know, a buffet of options that you would choose from.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask one more question, just gonna throw a wrench in all this because it just came to me. This three point three that we're going to be applying for this next go around. Are there certain ways that those have to be spent? All right, so like an example would be would that be able to be used to, for example, the police department that we haven't talked about in a while because we don't know how to fund it.
So supplementing EMS in the South County.
So you've got to have shovel ready projects or something like just a purchase of a fire truck, basically, so.
Okay, that's why, that's why I was asking.
You do it, right?
Because the way for us to loan that money was that it created jobs or the reason why we had that was to create jobs and things like that. Oh, for the, for the program name, Kim? I didn't know if they're both the same because you both, you said they're both CD.
Any CDBG eligible project is the same as for program income. So basically look at it as like instead of a notice of funding ability coming out and us applying against other jurisdictions. We put in an application very similar to this, but we're just proving that it's an eligible project through our paperwork and then we, we are able to use that money, but it does have to be driven. But it does have to be driven towards programs that qualify that, that doesn't have to be for job creation like it was originally intended. You can use it for building, like that he managed that a fire truck or building sidewalks or those other eligible activities. Yep. So it's pretty, pretty wide open. Yeah. You did. They just make sure it's eligible expenditure through the application process for that.
My squirrel mind just said, if you had both those numbers combined, we would be able to start that process of, of police department. So that's why I scrolled off in that direction. But, um, anyway, circling back around, I will leave this, I will open up this item to, uh, any public comment. Uh, seeing as none, pleasure the council.
Mr. Mayor, just had a real quick question for, uh, staff. The, the 1.7 million from the room manual payoff, uh, there's no timeline to expend those funds, correct?
Currently, no, no, it's, it's always subjective to policy change and, and rule change at HCD. Um, they, they do that. Normally your grandfather into whatever rule you apply for, um, you have a reuse plan. Now you do applications, but it sits there and they do want you to expend it. You, you will, you know, risk giving it back or getting nasty grams if you don't start using it. They don't like it to sit out there.
And keep in mind, the check was only written in May. It's not like it's been sitting languishing for years. So we should expend it, but I mean, we have time.
Good effort.
Three years to make.
That's good. That's good news. Thank, thank you.
So another question would be if we weren't successful getting sidewalk money with the new CDBG application, could we potentially add sidewalks to the list of buffet options for the 1.7?
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. And that was our thinking was to sort of see what happens with this and then, you know, put then once it's over, we won't come back again, CDBG until next year. And that would be a good time to come and say, okay, we tried twice. Here are five or six things that we think make sense and that meet the criteria that we could go after council. What do you want to do?
And as the federal government opens back up and we start to see more options, it's always, you know, a lot of programs USDA, um, when they are, they'll have funding, you're still 50% match. So having that program income, whatever the project may be, adds that back up instead of general fund is um, also a very good thing to have that money in the bank for.
Perfect. Pleasure the councils.
No motions required, but I would say my vote would be for staff to continue as recommended.
I agree.
Then consensus has been reached. Perfect. Thank you.
A resolution in a few weeks.
Okay. Next item, item eight B amend budget to execute amended contract for human resource services. Recommended action authorize the city manager to amend the budget for $15,000 for fiscal year 2025-26 to fund ongoing human resource consulting services with regional government services. City manager Brown.
Yes. So we have used, uh, the city has used RGS for, since prior to my arrival. So more than four years, uh, my predecessor enlisted their services and contracted with them. I've continued that contract. I did work with them in HR as well in Marysville. So I am familiar with them and have worked with them for a long time. And the, the thing that's really helpful is, you know, we don't have an HR department. We don't have, you know, a single person here that is an expert in human resources, which is everything from payroll to workers comp to disability, to discipline, to labor negotiations. I mean, it's a big discipline. And so having some experts on tap who have a variety of consultants who in their individual HR wheelhouse that we can go to, whether it be discipline or later, I use different people for different things on an as need basis, um, is very, very helpful. Um, this was just a miscommunication between myself and the finance director that it was overlooked and not in the budget in June. It normally would have just been part of the budget process, but um, was, like I said, a miscommunication between the two of us and it was inadvertently left out. So I wanted to bring it back because I would like to continue to be able to have them as a resource. It's, it's very, very helpful. And I think we're, we're very, um, frugal with how we use them. Literally it is like to tap them and say, what do I do about this strange situation I'm in with an employee? And they tell me what to do and then I go do it. And it's, you know, it's really minimal. Um, last three years, the contract's been $30,000. So this is a, a big reduction, um, mainly because last year we were working on new personnel rules, which we're almost finished with, and those will be coming to the council soon for a review and approval. But that was a big lift. And so that's why the budget was last year remained at 30,000, but now we're not doing that this year. So it seemed like we could cut that in half. So that's my recommendation and I'm available for any questions.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Is this hourly or in not to exceed, or is it just a flat amount?
It's not to exceed 15,000 in a fiscal year.
So it's based on what we use?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, some months we don't use them at all. And then suddenly there'll be two or three HR things I have to call them about, uh, that has happened before, for sure.
And on your, your council write-up, the fiscal impact shows 7,265,993 to 7,259,93. Is those numbers reversed?
Yes, that's correct.
So the budget mid-year or the adjusted expenses is 7,265,993 up from 7,259,93. I'm okay with this. That's it.
Councilmember Pride?
No questions.
Councilmember Busby? Councilmember Hanson?
No, why is use of funds, money well spent? This is, uh, an added insurance policy, the way I look at it, very personnel issues are, can become very complex, very quickly and very expensive if not done right. So I'm in favor. I support this approval of this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any comments? Other comment? Seeing none. Pleasure the council.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the amended budget as presented.
Seconded.
But first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion pass five. Oh, all right. Next item, item nine A, council correspondence. Um, I have three. Does anybody have anything not regarding sidewalks or farm bureau? None? All right. So I did receive three different items. First was a letter from, uh, Leela Stokes and Donetta Kafader, addressed to, um, the board of supervisors that we were CC'd in it regarding the sidewalks in front of the courthouse. Being, uh, the ramps being taken away that used to go across the street there. Um, and then in return to that, I did receive a letter from Superior Court of California, Glen, County of Glen. Um, I believe this one is signed by Chris Rule for, um, just essentially addressing that concern, um, to that particular person. And then the other thing I received was the Glen County Farm Bureau annual meeting, uh, will be Thursday, November 6th, 2025. Social is at 5:30, dinner at 6:30. Program in recognition to follow, and this will be at the Ord Ben Hall in Glen. Um, and I want to RSVP, get ahold of Lisa at the Farm Bureau office. With that, I have no other correspondence. Um, no one else has any, so we'll move on to item nine B, city council comments and reports. Vice Mayor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at your absence, uh, you asked that I would attend Johns Manville 50 year celebration on September 29th. I was pleased to be the elected official to represent, um, the city at that particular event. I gave a brief comments. I thanked him for being a silent partner to the city in the county of Glen. Um, with their various charitable efforts, we then were able to take a tour of the facility, which I hadn't in, all the time I've been in Willows, I had never been on that site. So it was very interesting to have that opportunity. They presented us with a, a crystal clock, which I think can be appropriate to rest on the city council or the city's, um, dais or front counter. Certainly it's not mine to have and it's not, uh, council's, but so I think it's all for the city. It was a very wonderful event. Uh, they had a nice brochure. Former council member Vince Holvik was a nine, uh, a 25-year member or, uh, what they called a quarter century um, employee out there in 1999. And I got to visit with him while we were out there. So it was a very nice event. So you snoozed and you lose, but, uh, it was a very enjoyable day. Also, I was able to attend the grand opening that, uh, re-grand opening and ribbon cutting at Walmart. Uh, they had a nice event outside and the stores well cleaned and maintained and rearranged. And someday, maybe three years from now, well, I'll figure out where everything is, but it's a beautiful store. Very nice event they had. The last, uh, ribbon cutting, I was able to attend Masters Gallery last Monday had a nice ribbon cutting and event. And again, we were able to get a tour of the facility. Um, it's amazing. They did. You know what? I don't want to misspeak. I can't remember if it was 2 million pounds or 20 million pounds. It was a lot of cheese they cut. They really know how to cut the cheese out there. Um, they were all very excited because the first 780 pound rock of cheese came in. They figured that would be a way to, um, improve the loss ratio of ends and all the other things and how they cut that. So they can shred it down to the six ounce package of cheese. They can send it out in 20 pound rocks to whomever wants to get it. And, uh, they have 45,000 feet out there back in Wisconsin. They have 300,000. And they would like to see this facility out here double its production if, within the existing facility with better processing equipment and then maybe add some more, more facilities. So very, very exciting that, uh, we have those three entities, uh, as our partners and economic engines within the city. And then the last thing, uh, Joe and I had a Zoom call meeting with SEMA, is it begat? Um, specifically it was based on a letter that I had written, uh, with Marty's AI assistants, um, about the dilapidated billboard that we see I-5 as you're coming into the off-ramp. Um, initially we, I asked if she would allow us to inspect it, see if it was seaworthy. And if so, could we then advertise the city of Willows on that? Um, she indicated in our Zoom meeting that that's not a possibility because you can't advertise somebody else. So she says, uh, so we left it with the dilapidated billboard either needs to be removed or repaired. And she was going to look into, um, possibly working with Caltrans to see if she couldn't move it to a more, uh, perfect location. So we'd like, I would love to see that billboard go away. It's a nice sore coming into Willows. And that's it for my activities.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Pride?
I don't really have activities, but I have some, um, maybe requests for future agenda items and one for information. So, um, I think in one of our biweekly reports, um, Marty, you were putting together just some volunteer projects for the Rotary Club. And I was curious if that list could be made available or maybe if we were, um, sharing them with other service clubs. I just know people just keep talking about, you know, little beautification projects or things that could be being done. So that would be a great list to maybe be able to see and start sharing. So folks wanna.
Certainly, um, the, um, vice mayor is on Rotary. I'm on Rotary. And we were asked by Roadie Rotary to come up with a project list and send it. And so since then, um, the vice mayor is also the president of Rotary this year. He's running with it with Rotary. So that's kind of how that came to be. It's not like, um, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, if anybody else wanted to come to us and ask us for something like that, we certainly could share that with them. I haven't heard from any other, um, groups, but certainly we'll send it to the council.
Well, I just, I just thought, you know, just another way, instead of a club asking if the city's just identified some projects that could be done with the new volunteer program, you know, all the liability stuff, it might just be a good thing to put out there. They might not know that we've taken that step. So just a little PR.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I think that the vice mayor was planning to reach out to some of the, for some of the projects, weren't you to, to some of the civic groups?
Some of the things that Rotary is looking at is a little bit beyond, um, our level of bodies that can, to work, work in. Um, we did make, uh, we had the FFA Rotary did assist us with their pancake breakfast and they for their remuneration, we, we allow them to keep the tips. And so when we delivered a check for $251 to the FFA, three of the ladies there, two of them actually are in welding. So one of the items on this, on the list was the barbecue that's out there that is failing and it needs to be replaced. So we mentioned to them that if they could work with maybe the industrial arts teacher at high school and the welding shops, uh, maybe Rotary and maybe some of the other Rotary clubs or, uh, service clubs who might be able to fund some of the material costs. And they could use it as a project. What was exciting to me was the FFA requires um, 10 years or 10 hours of volunteer service, five within the city or within the school is limited and the other five has to be, um, public assistance. And it's also a requirement of the, of the high school that they provide at least five hours of community service. So I was excited to hear that. But they thought that was a pretty decent idea and I'll just have to keep checking with the advisor to see if that's something that we get some, some lift on.
I think it's great. I mean, I love what Rotary is doing. And I think being able to expand on that and kind of get things being done that are coming out of the community and community base would just be pretty awesome.
Just to clarify, did you want us to just send it to the council or did you want us to reach out to the, some of the other civic groups?
Well, I think for now, I mean, I'd kind of like to see what it is. I just know talking to people like downtown business people and just different folks, there's areas, I know an area that concern gets expressed is in front of the old Cas Ramos, that whole Moe strip area is pretty messy and people have said it'd be nice to, we'll just go clean it up. And I said, whoa, 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 you know, if you want to go clean something up, the city does have a new volunteer program. And so just some ways to be able to articulate that and see what kind of projects the city has deemed would be, um, would fit a volunteer type thing.
If you like, Rotary is going to paint the shade structure at, uh, Central Park this coming Saturday.
Oh darn, I'm out of town all day. Otherwise I would actually like to paint. Um, so two other things just possibly for future agendas. Um, one is, and you alluded to it, Mayor Hudson, just getting an update on where we are with renegotiations on our law enforcement contracts, and that's coming up at the end of um, June of 26. And then I know, you know, Marty, you and I had had a conversation a couple of months ago about other alternatives to the sheriff's office contract. And I know council member Busby and I were not on the council when some of those other alternatives were, were presented. Um, I know I would find it interesting to go back and just look and see what are those other alternatives. I'm going to assume that any negotiations come with an increased price tag. And does that lend itself then to being able to do something different? I know for me, I'd like to have some options or at least have been able to hear what those are. So I just thought if I could propose that as a, a future agenda item. And then the, the only, the last thing I have is on Pioneer Energy. I was at a Cal Cities meeting in September, and I know we were all informed at the council that the PUC approved the, um, power aggregate with Pioneer Injury Energy in July. Um, it would be nice to bring that back if for no other reason than to let the community know that that has been approved and that's moving forward, which is my understanding from talking to the, um, Pioneer Energy reps at that meeting. Um, so that they don't just find out later when they start doing their public outreach. I just thought it'd be nice to have the city do a, a public, you know, announcement, even that, yes, it's been approved by the PUC. Yes, it's moving forward. You can expect to be hearing and just start making sure folks aren't blindsided by that. And then one last little random question, because I'm looking, I'm doing vacation planning, right? So November 11th is Veterans Day and on the calendar, it's purple for a holiday closure. But do we have a meeting or are we canceling?
There is no meeting.
Perfect. That's what I thought. I wanted to make sure. Thank you. That's all I have.
If I could just mention, um, the Pioneer Energy. So we were already given some talking points on that. I'm planning to share that as part of the next council biweekly update. So you can see all the different, um, things that they will be communicating to the public. When I spoke to Pioneer, they weren't planning on really doing any kind of rolling it out till next summer. And I thought that that would be the time when the city would start doing the same thing, because this is not going until effect until October of 2027. So, but I mean, if the council wants to hear a formal presentation and an update, I think I could have them come back and, I mean.
I, I wasn't thinking of a formal presentation. I was just thinking something that's in our agenda packet, just as even a discussion item, just so that as people are paying attention to our meetings, it's, it's bringing it to our attention more in a public meeting than in our biweekly update, so that the community's kind of been folded into, it actually went through and was approved by the PUC. So it's not a year and a half late. And we, I think we, we approved it at our February meeting. And then we found out in July, and then if there's nothing until next year, people have already forgotten we were even talking about it. So I just think it's that transparency and just making it available or putting it on our website even, just or in the newsletter. The newsletter might be a great. Just somewhere making sure people are hearing that it's, it is moving forward.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Councilmember Busby?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, agree with, uh, with Lori. I think that's one of those things where, uh, if we don't get ahead of it, the misinformation will swallow us alive. So just little breadcrumbs throughout the time, but, uh, yeah. An education campaign when it becomes, I think, when it becomes appropriate, uh, being that it's 2027, I'm sure there's a plan for that and everything. Uh, but nope, my, uh, my only other report is, um, I was able to bring my son to the national night out and kudos to the entire staff and everybody that worked together, put that on. It was awesome. Being able to get that close to the fire trucks. I have a problem now. Thank you. But yeah, thank you guys very much. It was awesome event. Great job.
Councilor Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Pride in reference, uh, in reference to the Law Enforcement Services Ad hoc Committee. Was last reported, we're, we're still awaiting information back from Glen County Sheriff's Office staff. We have reference to a committee and the, uh, the contract negotiation. We still have nothing. We're just holding pattern, uh, waiting while they get. So as soon as we have the information, we'll have a meeting. And as soon as they're ready with it, we'll have a meeting and then be able to report back. Hopefully soon, hopefully soon. We're anticipating, I've had a, a little meeting by now, however, has not taken place yet. Still awaiting. So, so, uh, reference to other, other report outs, uh, yesterday, we had our monthly, uh, Glen Groundwater Authority Board of Directors meeting. Routine business. I have nothing or shared in the report as we continue working on our groundwater sustainability plan. And all the Meyer, the Meyer of, uh, of requirements that come down from DWR and continue to. So we're, uh, we're, uh, moving forward. We have a special meeting with, uh, another special meeting in a series with our sister agency, the Closer Ground, this Friday afternoon here in Willows. As we move forward with our, with our plan. And, uh, other than that, uh, echo, uh, Councilmember Busby's comments, uh, Carleen, thank you very much. For our city clerk, Lane Bryce, uh, excellent work in reference to all the work that you expended on behalf of bringing the national night out, uh, you know, uh, to fruition, uh, very successful. As well as the entire staff, city staff, Marty Brown, obviously, uh, uh, Chief Monk and the entire team, uh, Willis Public Works. Kudos to the public works team. They did awesome work as did the fire department, as did, did our staff. But Carleen, I know you did a lot of work. Good job. I, I took my granddaughter as I, as I normally do. She absolutely loved it. The, uh, the magician was a hit, the bounce out was a hit, you know, the usual, the usual things an 11 year old likes. But, uh, but a good job, good job. It was, it was, uh, it was fun, uh, a fun evening. And I believe that's, uh, all I had. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'm kind of in the same boat. Um, I did go to two ribbon cuttings, went to Walmart and Masters Gallery. Both great events. Walmart had a lot of their vendors out there with, uh, some freebies for everyone. Um, I think I got a Red Bull out of the deal. But no, it was great to put some faces to some names out there and, um, actually I had to take a fire truck because I was working that day. So I even had a fire truck at their, uh, grand reopening. So, um, same with Masters Gallery, did the same tour. That was a really big block of cheese and they were all really excited. Think they're ready for us to be like, okay, we're bored looking at cheese. And we're like, no, we want to watch you guys cut it. They all wanted to go inside and watch it get cut. But just, uh, facility and the way that it operates is, uh, pretty mind boggling when you go in there. It's an automated, uh, control arm, which was moving boxes and stacking it onto a pallet, which seeing it in person is a little bit different than watching the videos. Uh, that was pretty interesting to watch that, uh, that's just the automation of how it purposefully stacked the crates full of cheese. And the gentleman there was very, uh, informative of their process and everything else. And so that was a, a great event. National on Night Out, loved it. Great job. The Bike, Trike and Wagon Parade was, um, well done. The kids are really excited, at least it seemed like. Um, Chief, great job cooking. Okay. Now you had one flare up, but you know, burgers were still pretty good on point. So well done. And yeah, all city staff, thank you guys for, uh, all the efforts that you guys put into that as well. And then as well as the sponsors and everyone else and people that set up their booths, um, that came down. I went there with my girlfriend and her kids and they had some really good information that they actually collected and hopefully are going to start, um, using. So, uh, was it 1,073,000? 1,075,000 gallons of water is used every day in the city of Willows. So.
Is that a stat from Cal Water?
Cal Water, yeah, that was their question of the night.
Seven gallons a minute.
How many, how many gallons do you think that we flow into the city of Willows in 24 hour period? And I initially said, I was like 80,000. Samsonite was way off on that one. Um, yeah, it was one, about 1,075,000 is what I want to say he said. So, um, anyways, just like I said, some good, good information, kind of some eye openers there and everything else. So, um, with that, I have nothing further and I'll pass it over to item nine C, city manager's report.
Just very quickly, I do want to echo the thank yous, you know, it was a big, uh, heavy lift for the team. And Carleen, I think it was her first, you know, big event, putting it on and the bike and trike parade was also.
It was awesome.
Yeah. And, um, so yeah, I think it was a really good event. I want to thank the fire chief for his and the volunteers for all the cooking that they did. And then of course the superintendent, Nataisa and her team, all the pre prep work with the park that they did. The sheriff's office and the sheriff's volunteers and OES and our sponsors, PG&E, Cal Water and WM. I think it was really pulled together really nicely and I think everybody also liked it was a little cooler than it was last year in August. So I think we'll do this again in October next year as well. The only other thing I wanted to mention, it's a little early, but I wanted to get it on people's radar. Today we did solidify the grand opening ribbon cutting of the sewage lift stations. At Sycamore Lift Station will be on November 5th at 11:30 AM. And, um, the city engineer will also be here and, um, well, I'm kind of excited about it because this is part of a large bond that the city issued right when I first arrived here in December of 2021 of over about $2.3 million. And this is about half of it has gone into rehab all five lift stations. It's a big, um, it's a big heavy lift, no pun intended, to get this done. And so I think we're all really relieved to get this done for the city of Willows and the citizens here because it will really make a difference. We're going to go to electronic remote, um, monitoring. The SCADA system is also really state of the art. We'll be doing a little bit of a demo of some sort. We're figuring it out yet at the grand opening ribbon cutting. Put big red ribbons on all four other stations. So you can drive around and check them out that day and do a little geocoding or something. So anyways, I hope people can come out again. That's November 5th at 11:00, 11:30 AM at the Sycamore Lift Station.
And they did a wonderful job implementing those back into the ground. You hardly noticed that they tore something up and replaced it. Most of the time you're like, oh, there's a truck starts rocking and everything else. They did a wonderful job making that a seamless fix. So, um, yeah, with that, as our closed item session has been pulled, we will adjourn the meeting at 6:59. Have a good night.
I love you.